In order, please rise and say the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven? Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Lord is the kingdom, and our hope and glory forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D on the agenda is the recognition of select Napoleon Aquatics Center personnel. Done by the mayor.
Thank you so much. The stereotype is our lifeguards, they sit at the pool, they twirl their whistle back and forth, they blow it every once in a while, hey, you walk, hey, you walk, spin, 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 work on their tan. That was not the case on July the 19th. And so if you were here and you were involved in that, would you please come up and Kevin, can you open that door for me, please? Come on up. Come on. Tony, you want to come up too?
I don't, but I want to get a picture.
Okay. On July the 19th, from what I've been told, there was one of our patrons had a medical emergency. The lifeguard noticed the patron was in trouble, was on the lower end. Was on the deep end of the pool. The lifeguard's exactly where all that training mattered, right? They blew their whistle three times, went in to take, and then all the help showed up. Everybody else kind of made their way around to make sure that the lifeguards at the duty had a place to go. There was an angel nurse that was there, an off-duty nurse that was there to help out quite a bit, too. But on that day, that day, training mattered. Okay, so what we're gonna do is, see, my problem was, what do I get you? Right, do I get you a certificate, right, say thank you very much, that's cool, right? The problem is, you take the certificate home, and in a year or two, when you're no longer there, because you're on to bigger and better things, they were gonna forget. So that was my issue. What do I give you to say thank you that's gonna remind other people, the lifeguards, of what you did? So with a big help from Tony Cotter, we got one of these. All right? But here's what we're gonna do. You're all gonna sign it. I want you to sign it on this side, because I'm gonna put something on this side. And you can hang it up in the building tomorrow, so when people see it, they know. Okay? Cameron, you want to be first?
I can.
Sure. So you were the one on site, right?
Yes.
The one that... Write it big.
Big?
Big. Be proud.
Mariposa?
Yeah, of course. Camera's around, well, only one camera here, that's good. There's a couple of them that were not here tonight, they have other obligations, which we understand. And we also want to say thank you for all you do to keep our facility running as smoothly as possible. It is a gem for the city. So what I'm gonna put on this side is training mattered. And then it was the 19th of July, right? Because on that day, the training mattered. On that day, all that stuff you'd gone through, all those websites, all that training you've done, day in and day out, hoping this day would never happen, all that training you did, it mattered on that day. When that patron at the bottom of the pool, training was done. You had to do what you're trained to do, that's exactly what you did. And because of that, that person is still alive, still with us. That was a good day at the city. Sunny in '85 was great, but it's this, it seems like. Okay? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on up, moms, come on, get your pictures, come on, right in here, get your pictures right in here, come on.
You ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Come on up.
Bumpy mouth.
Yeah.
Well, then you can take a picture, I'm sorry.
Take pictures?
Mm-hmm.
We good? They go back to the cameras, we good? We'll take one more? We take one more?
One, two. All right, thank you.
Andy, you want to say?
No.
No? Doug, what's your team?
Um, yeah, I think everybody responded really, really well. The three whistles were great. Justin and I heard them run away. It was really weird, because we blow like a long whistle at the 50 of every single hour for a 10-minute break for the kids, and the long whistle blew at like 3:49. And me and Justin looked at each other, we're like, hmm, they blew it like a minute early. And then Addie Spicer stood up and was like, uh, like I just saw somebody fly off their stand, so it was just like a really weird day, like we all had our fanny packs on, I like spread it out there, and saw the nurse doing compressions, and then, yeah, it was really good save. She did awesome, he was like completely submerged in the bottom of the pool, so for a 15-year-old girl, she did great.
Awesome.
Top of that.
Should I tell them?
I said that, they want it, they can stick around as long as they want, but yeah.
Might be another hour or so, you guys are welcome to stay, it's really exciting stuff.
You know how to clear a room, you know that?
The mayor's not gonna have a speech or anything.
Brian, you can't go.
I know. Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to item E, is approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, a minutes shall stand approved from July 18th, 2022, regular council meeting. Hearing done, will stand approved. Item F, citizen communication, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on something that is not on the agenda, or if you're on WebEx, you can type in the chat box, and we will check that periodically. If you'd like to address council, please come up to the podium, tell us your name, full name, address, and write it on the sheet there, please. While you're doing that, I'll just let you know, we do have a clock, a timer here, we give everyone five minutes, so I'll just let you know, I'll start that timer when you start speaking.
Okay, I'm here to talk about pest.
Could you say your name for us?
Mike Ostler.
Thank you, Mike.
Here to talk about pest. About three weeks ago, I was out at the yard waste, and when I came out of there, I saw some deer in the soybean field across the road, and I thought, well, I'm gonna check this out, so I went around the back of Walmart, and by the time I got there, you know, the first time around, the numbers went from two to 11 deer. So I drove about a square mile around town, and we counted 33 deer just out and about. I figure there's probably about 175 deer in the city limits. I've got the records from the police department about vehicle deer crashes, there are 16 in the last year. I talked to our Henry County Sheriff, Mike Odenbender, today. He figures there's about 100, 200 a year, but he didn't have an exact number. I talked to a former game warden that started around 1962, and he said that year, they had six road kills in the entire county. The current game warden is Matthew Smith, and I've talked to him several times. He says that if you have some damage from deer, go to the website www.wildohio.gov, and you can fill out a deer damage report. I told the farmer today, which is Toby Fitz and Rider that farms the field by the old Walmart, he also farms the field by ADS, talked to him, and he said, well, it keeps him busy just keeping insurance on those properties, because he has to have his crop in by like June 20th to get insurance on it from all the geese, groundhogs, and deer damage. Personally, I've gotten 13 groundhogs in the area where I live. I've been growing a garden for 57 years. Back about that time, Ken Hayes had Ken's Golf down the street. I talked to Kenny after one-third of my sweet corn was eaten, which is 10 dozen, and he said, well, they've been eating my flowers in the backyard. The, what do you call those, Ken?
Hostas.
Yeah. So anyway, after I've gotten my third of my sweet corn eaten, they ate all the leaves off my tomatoes this year, they ate all the leaves off the green peppers, they ate all the leaves off the green beans, not real happy about it. And the groundhogs, I have a chain link fence around my yard, and the groundhogs, if they want in, they just dig under, and then I have to take more wires and put along the fence and get more dirt somewhere, and I have to fill the holes back in. Got a property at 1211 Oakwood, and that one, I've gotten nine groundhogs and four at my own residence. This hasn't been, it's been working for decades, the problem. Talked to the insurance industry this week, and my insurance, the owners down there, they said, we're awful, we're culling the herd. When I was on second shift coming back from Toledo, that night, I'd drive along Kingsbury and Mollie, and those deer are so tame that they will sit right there at the curb. And one night, I turned around, because I couldn't believe it was a real deer, and I thought it was just a fake deer. So I turned around, and that deer was within just a few feet from me, and I shined a flashlight in its eyes, didn't move, but just as soon as I started putting the window down, it was gone, quicker than ever. There have been some deer problems on Scott Street, we had a deer go through the fasten knob, quarter-inch plate glass window, and that was either a year or two ago. So anyway, I'm just asking for some help, because it's gotten out of control. One of the reasons why we have so much deer habitat is they don't have any predators, except man, and we can't shoot in Napoleon. A lot of our farm ground, the farm ground off of Scott Street and back of the old Landmark Building, that has gone from farm ground to forest. Even in the Rice Street area, across the bridge there, people used to live back there, and they used to have gardens. A lot of the Holgrave ground has become forest instead of being farmed. So I want to see the Fitz and Riders keep farming, because if we, if they quit farming, that's gonna turn to forest, and then we're gonna have even more deer. So I think that pretty well outlines my situation. I did put some fishing line around my vegetables, two feet, three feet. I don't know if that did any good or not, but I'm about ready to put electric fence in.
Well, Mike, thank you for taking the time to do all that research, said, you know, just coming here and saying, hey, there's a lot of deer around, I mean, I appreciate all the work you did, and we can talk about what options we may have to...
You're absolutely right, though, Mike, because I take stuff out for yard waste, and I don't think there's been a time yet this year where I have not seen a deer, there's always deer out there. Well, I mean, don't get me wrong, the deer are magnificent. But at the same time, we have, that's an issue now, right? There's a line, and you're right, they're smart, right, there is not getting shot at the common city limits, so... Right. They're not stupid animals. But remember that website, wildohio.gov, and I'll be getting back with our game warden, about life officer, and I'll be getting back with Fitz and Riders, and try to give them an idea of what might have transpired tonight.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may.
Yes. Can I go ahead?
You got somebody else? Do you want me to respond to that, or wait?
Just wait, just wait. Is this the same thing, Ron?
It's similar.
Okay.
It's just a reiteration, I'm not gonna give you all the statistics and stuff that Mike gave, but we've been talking about coming for a couple months now, and it's just gotten to the point where the deer are out of control, and every night, we can get up and look out our back window, and there might be four or five in our backyard roaming around, depending on how much light there is to see them, and our garden is right behind theirs, and so our two gardens are kind of adjunct to each other. And the deer have done damage, they eat the blossoms off everything, eat all the raspberries, and we run into the same deal as he is with all the crops. And we've raised garden there ever since Linda's mom and dad lived there, and that was back in the 50s when they first built the house. So I'm just reiterating, there is a deer problem. How you want to thin the herd, if it's possible, or it's just something we're just gonna have to deal with, and I have to put up a little, one of those hunting stages or whatever, one on my back porch, and sit out there with my spotlight, Kenny over will have a couple brews, and we can talk about the deers that come through. But I, you know, I don't know what you really can do, other than have an in-town shoot, and I know Ottawa Hills tried that a couple years ago, and the people that were complaining about their flowers being eaten, turned around and started complaining about Bambi being shot, because they thought they should have been trapped, and you can't trap a deer. I'm just reiterating what Mike said.
Thank you.
You want me to put my name on this?
Yes, please, Ron, thank you so much.
What'd you do, take the pen?
I think it dropped down.
Oh.
Mike's walking away with pens. Somebody get him a bank pen, you guys got bank pens?
I don't know, don't see any.
We only have one for the whole bank.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. A few things I did mention, this year, out of the five and a half years I've been here, this year has been the highest amount of complaints that my office has received about deer. And we've heard Councilman Commodore, when he was on council, get complaints from people at the hardware store about the deer population, how it's growing, how there's hits, how it's a safety issue, how they're destroying crops and flower beds. Another thing is, there was an article in one of the newspapers, it was either the Crescent or the Signal, and talking about how there's been record years of deer hits, and it just keeps increasing. Another item is, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe either of you might know this, but are people feeding the deer?
Well, I know of one case, where a lady buys a form and feeds them.
I had heard there was one or two people that actually feed the deer, they have the five-gallon buckets up, they're on timers, and they fling the corn out in their backyard, and they like to see Bambi come up and eat the corn, and, you know, they become really docile.
Now, there is a deer stand within the city limits. You have to hike to find it, but there is a deer stand out there.
Yeah, and there's, it might be in that area that's not in the city limits, that there's actually like a donut hole over between Scott and Oakwood. There's actually an area that's technically not in the city limits, there's no development there, it's all wooded.
Right.
It might be in there.
No, that isn't the location.
Okay, all right, okay. Good to know.
Don't tell them where you're, don't tell them.
There was a guard dogs laying on the ground.
Gotcha.
And I don't know whose it is, or when it started, or if they still use it, or if they just had that deer stand, they went there and took pictures.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no idea.
Yeah. And the last thing I'd say is that there is a way that, I believe the, it rests with the city manager, where the city manager can authorize controlled hunt, or authorize there to be some type of calling of deer. And the only place that we could really do that, Billy and I have talked about it a little bit, would be like Oakwood Park. That seems to be where the deer population is really rampant. It's a wooded area, but you'd have to shut down the whole walking path area, and sort of segment off where, you know, the idea I have in my mind is, segment off certain portions where people can hunt, you know, close off the trail system, and just have a controlled hunt, where maybe it's archery only. Or there's a way that you can hire sharpshooters to come in and do a calling. But that's a process, has to go through ODNR, costs money, but there is a way to do a controlled hunt in the city limits. To really control the population, I think you gotta do this for a sustained certain amount of years, to really bring the numbers back down, and then, as the populations keep rebounding, you know, how often do you do it, do you keep doing it, you know, do you do it every year, do you do it for five years, see how it goes, to really make a dent in the population, because your tags, you can only get so many tags for, Chad, you know this better than anybody.
Henry County, you give three.
Okay, that's a...
One buck, two does.
One buck, two does, or three does, yep. So there is a way to do it, but it definitely impacts Oakwood Park and park usage. Don't really know of many other areas, unless there are private landowners like Mr. Fitz and Rider, is it, who farms the land by the old Walmart, and allowing private property owners over a certain acreage to hunt on those grounds, too, so. And there is a way to, you know, kind of set it up as like a lottery, where people can apply, and then, you know, have them demonstrate that they have the ability, they're not just anybody off the street coming in and trying to hunt them. You know, you want to have some kind of filtering of, you know, who's a real hunter, and who's, you know, you don't want a fly-by-night person coming in and flinging arrows all over the place. Somebody that knows the hunting laws and rules pretty well, you can screen that, too. So, just some options, I know October's coming up, October 1st is bow season, start of bow season, so if that's something we want to look at, you can always put that on as an agenda item for either municipal properties and land use, or maybe even Parks and Rec Committee, if that's something a council would want to assign to the committee. If you want to think about it until the end of the meeting, make a decision then, if anybody else wants to weigh in as we go around the table, that's all I have to say.
I did forget one item, the ODNR can do a flyover and count the deer, but it has to be winter, leaves off the trees, and it has to be snow on the ground.
Okay.
And there is, I believe, an experimental deal that's going on, I think it's Mentor Ohio, where they're doing kind of a birth control type thing with the females, the does.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Mike. And thank you, Ron. Mrs. Ron?
All right, moving on to item G, reports from council committees. G1 is Finance and Budget Committee, met on July 25th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, and recommendation to council to accept the recommendation of the Finance and Budget Committee for the extension of the contract with the independent CPA to continue the next five annual audits, and also recommendation to council to increase the threshold limit for purchases or contracts, ordinance 105 dash, or .01, and contracts material and labor ordinance number 105.02 to $50.
$50,000.
$50,000.
Switching that.
You don't want us to lower it to $50?
We'd be here, we'd be here all night, every Monday night, passing stuff.
Item G2, Safety and Human Resource Committee did not meet on July 25th, 2022, due to lack of agenda items, and G3, the Technology Committee did not meet on August 1st, due to lack of agenda items. Okay, item I, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. I1, ordinance number 046-22, an ordinance authorizing Ohio Department of Transportation to perform necessary work within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, regarding the resurfacing and bridge repair project on State Route 110. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
I'll just turn it over to Chad, and I think, Chad, do you have an update for everybody?
Yeah, this was put on the agenda at the request of State of Ohio. They need legislation allowing them to work within the city's corporation limits. When I spoke to them, I got with the law department, they prepared necessary legislation. I had a meeting with the state today, requesting that they consider extending their project from P3, which was their terminus of the project, extending it to Perry Street, and I asked them if there was any way I could get in on the backside into one of their programs, it's called the urban paving program. They didn't get a definitive yes today. This legislation gives them permission to work in the city. There could be a second piece coming, which would have them pave from P3 to Perry Street, and they would cover between 80 and 70% of those costs. I'll know more about that, but this piece, I would need to allow them to work in the corporation limits. If we do have another one coming, it would be an agreement for the additional work.
Okay. You? Any other questions or comments?
State Route 110 runs in front of Campbell's Soup, is Campbell's kind of aware of what's going on, so they can route their truck traffic appropriately?
Yes, as you may or may not be aware, they have a project going on there right now that's doing bank stabilization work, and I believe that's the third project they've had out there in about the last 10 years.
Okay.
This will be the fourth, and they've coordinated all that with Campbell's on all the previous ones. I didn't ask them that question, but they've done it on all the previous ones.
Any other questions? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, that will move on to second read. Item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. J1, resolution number 043-22, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and Local Transportation Improvement Program funds for projects deemed necessary by the city engineer in the year 2023, and declaring an emergency. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I'll just turn it back over to Chad. Chad?
This is the annual grant application we apply for, commonly known as Issue 2. We generally apply for funding for various sewer projects. As of right now, my intention is to apply to replace the brick arch sewer on Third Street. It's probably in the worst condition of any of the other sewers in town. Right now, my estimate sits about $725,000. If we're successful, we would receive $325,000 of that grant. So this would just allow the city manager to make that application.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions or comments on this? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ben?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, that will move on to third read. Item J2, ordinance number 044-22, and ordinance amending ordinance number 053-21 regarding the compensation of certain city of Napoleon position classifications in and for the year 2022, and declaring an emergency. Motion.
Same move.
Um, this is nothing new to report, other than on your screen is the, uh, uh, recommended pay adjustment for the part-time firefighters.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. That too will move on to third reads. Item K is third readings of ordinances and resolutions. K1, ordinance number 037 dash 22, an ordinance amending the City of Napoleon, Ohio Engineering Department Rules and Regulations, also amending previous Scrivener errors and formatting issues, and declaring an emergency. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, nothing new to report on this one.
All right, any questions, comments? Okay, hearing on Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. That has passed on the third read. Okay, moving on to item L, good at the city. L1 is discussion or action, June 2022, replacement pages to the codified ordinances. Need to direct the law director to draft legislation. Anything specific you need to discuss in this first?
Nope.
All right, have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
Motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Item L2, discussion or action, review of trucking permit, application for Teguaria El Gordito. And that too, we need to direct the law director to draft legislation.
One item to note, if I may, Council President, is that the owner plans on being here at the next meeting and is requesting suspension so that she can proceed with, uh, getting her application into the state to get it moved. This is a business that's located on, currently on, uh, Perry Street in front and is moving to where the old KFC was. So they have a drive-through spot, but also now want to truck a permit in to serve alcohol.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Item L3, discussion or action, recommendation to accept the recommendation of the Finance and Budget Committee for the extension of the contract with the independent CPA to continue the next five annual audits. Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. What I'm asking for is just a motion from council to approve the extension, um, with the City of Napoleon and BHM CPA Group. They are the CPA firm that has done the last five years' audit. And the state has decided that the City of Napoleon does not need to have the state review our audits. Occasionally, they pull them back in to have a re-review. Instead, they allowed us to have an extension of a five more additional years with them. Um, and this was discussed in the Finance and Budget Committee. I would encourage that this gets approved, and we're just looking for a motion of the extension of the original agreement.
If for some reason we didn't choose to extend, we would have to look for another firm to start over?
And that is an option. I mean, if, if we weren't happy with this group, we could do an RFP, Request for Proposal, and have other accounting firms come in and they would give us a quote. Um, I'm comfortable with this group, the, my employees are comfortable with this group, and then, in my opinion, they've done a, a good enough job to honor the extension.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this?
Can you feel the, the quote on price is fair too, right?
I, I do, it is higher than what it was before, but that agreement was for, from five years ago. And I feel that that would be in line, that if we did ask for other accounting firms to, uh, submit a proposal, that it would be within their range of what others would, um, put their quotes in for with that. And I would just say this, I mean, it's a good thing when the state tells you that they're not going to bring you back, so. And typically, when the state comes, brings you back in, which I would anticipate in five years, because that would give us 10 years' time, that it's going to cost us more money.
Right.
We'll see how that goes.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, uh, moving on to item four, discussion or action, recommendation to increase the threshold limit for purchases or contracts. Ordinance 105 point 01, and contracts materials and labor, ordinance 10502 to $50,000.
Do you want to discuss now, or do you want to wait for the legislation?
Um, I think, uh, maybe just a couple of minutes of explaining a little bit what you guys explained to us the other day.
Yeah.
Have a heads up.
Yeah, that works.
You or Chad, whoever.
Yep, um, I'll, I'll start off if, uh, Kevin or, or Chad want to jump in. So, I, you know, being a former department head myself, um, you know, I'm looking out for the department heads on this one. You know, with inflation, the way it's been going, um, first of all, let me start with that anything over $25,000 requires city council approval and, uh, would require some type of legislation or bid to, to, uh, you know, make sure that funds are appropriated for whatever action it is, so. The issue with formal bid, a formal bidding process of $25,000 threshold is that at, at $24,999.99, you can issue a purchase order. And it's a pretty, uh, less cumbersome process, I'll say. Where a department head would put together a purchase requisition, uh, send it in, I would review it, uh, approve. It goes to the finance department, they review and approve, uh, and then it, then a purchase order is issued. Um, and it's definitely not a rubber stamp process. Uh, there have been several times where the city manager's office and the finance director's office have turned things back or had to correct things or, um, something else that happened along the way. When you get to that $25,000 mark, it is a substantial difference in the amount of work it takes to put together a bid document. Not just the, the paperwork that's involved in putting everything together and processing it, but the time that goes into it too. And getting to that point where anything over, it's more, more and more things go over $25,000. Uh, it just, it really bogs down, uh, the process and the service that the department heads are trying to provide for their departments. That's, that, that's the, the premise for the, the recommendation of, of going above the $25,000.
And I think you mentioned also that in the long run, it could cost us more money because maybe some of the contractors, they don't want to go through the bidding process and they just say, you know what, forget it then, and then we end up going with someone else that may have charged more.
100%, 100%. And there will, you will, you start to weed out a lot of, really like, a, a lot of your smaller contractors and, and a lot of your large contractors. So if they have to go through the whole bidding process, it's not worth the effort for them. They've got bigger things to, to worry about.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, they also, you guys also talked about how the state allowed, uh, 50,000. So if they weren't going by the rules and regulations that we have in place here, um, those other cities have a limit with the state of 50, correct?
That is correct.
So it makes it easier for other cities to work with people than it is with us doing to the contract.
Yeah, that's, that's right. $50,000 is the, is the state threshold, so, and that's state statute. So, and, and are they going to raise theirs at some point? I would guess probably, but it hasn't come to that point yet. The recommendation is to keep the ordinance, change it to 50,000, and keep it at 50,000. If the state moves, then the state moves, but it stays at 50,000.
So we've been at 25,000 now for 18 years?
18 years.
Yes. Did you have anything else to add, Chad?
No, I think, uh, the facts of it pretty much sums it up. Um, just some details. The engineering departments had two projects this year that if we had the $50,000 threshold, we probably could have avoided the bidding process. And to give you an idea, the bidding process from the time Roxanne and I start on the books till we advertise, till we open bids and go through the award process, that's approximately two months, and then we might have another six weeks to sign contracts. Uh, so if we want to do a project in the summer, we have to start that process in January or February. That, that makes it very difficult to, to get things accomplished, makes us very inefficient. Um, it's much more efficient if we're able to, if we have a construction project, we can call up two or three, uh, area contractors that we know are capable. We've been here a long time, we know who can do the work, get quotes, give them, say, two weeks to give us quotes, see who the low one is, and then we write the purchase order. Um, if we're doing a design project, it's a similar issue where if, uh, we know which consulting firms can do the work, we'll get ahold of three or four of them, we'll get quotes. They meet our budget, whoever's the lowest and best, we select who it is and move on. It just makes all the work the departments are doing much more efficient. And with the rising costs, you've seen some of the rising costs in some of our projects. I think I mentioned in the, uh, committee meeting, uh, 12-inch sanitary sewer pipe I used to get for 80, $90 a foot. My most recent project was 230. So our, our costs are going up, we're beating, we can accomplish much less for 25,000 than we could even just two years ago. So it's just an effort to try to make us more efficient and expedite, expedite not only the, uh, construction projects, but also the design projects, as well as some of our purchases.
Thank you, Chad.
Sure.
Kevin, you have anything to add?
I, I am very comfortable going to the 25 to the 50,000. And we still have our procedures in place. If items aren't budgeted, it gets held up there. You don't have to go into Finance Budget Committee to do budget increases because if, if they don't have the funds to be able to encumber too. So that process is already there, and again, I, I would approve of it to go to 50.
Thank you. All right, so I think for tonight, we're just looking for a motion to, um, direct the law director to.
Draft legislation, or to amend, I guess, draft legislation to amend. Codified ordinance, uh, 105 point 01.
N2.
N2, yep. There's a second one here.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Becker Day?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Hey, item L5, discussion or action, cemetery dump truck replacement.
All right, here's a interesting one. What happened to the cemetery dump truck?
Caught on fire.
Caught on fire. It was, it's an old truck, it caught on fire, it was totaled out. Is it still sitting in the back of the operations building?
It is.
Okay.
Is this one of the trucks that was probably somewhere in the other department years ago, and then somewhere else, and somewhere else, and it ends up?
Actually, I bought that in 2001.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It wasn't, and it was one of the very few dump trucks that we got that hasn't been.
Okay. That's right. So, uh, totaled out, insurance is going to pay just over, uh, $10,000. Um, we had our internal people look at that price and the condition of the truck and said, take the money and run. Uh, so I don't think, we, we didn't argue on the, uh, or haggle or anything on the, um, price of the, um, insurance claim. The, um, the issue is, uh, we still have to bury people in the cemeteries, and we still have to maintain the cemeteries by statute, so, um, we do need a new truck. There's two options, uh, that, that, that we, we recommend, and I'll go for, what, what I would say is option two, which is on the screen here and was in your packet, which is to just have the Parks Department purchase a dump truck uh, replacement off a state term contract. Uh, to do that, we would use the insurance claim fund, uh, as, as well as, uh, the cemetery. Now, mind you, uh, cemeteries as part of the parks is actually paid out of general fund. That is not parks, that is strictly general fund. So, and the remainder would come from, uh, capital fund.
Actually, there's a trust fund.
There, yes.
That, uh, opening closing fees, so, and burial fees, half of that go into this fund for maintenance purposes for the cemeteries, both of them, and the other half goes into the general fund.
Yep. So there's money in there, but, you know, when you, when you expense out what, what, uh, this type of truck is going to cost brand new, we're probably in the, Chad, you might know better too, $70,000, $90,000 range?
70 to 80 would be where I would probably put it, one ton.
One ton, yep. You know, it's going to need a, a, a plow package, a tow package.
And everything equipped.
Yeah, so it's got the outfits and everything that go with it, so, um, by the time we get it, I mean, I don't know what the state term is, is at right now, but when you outfit it, you know, count on 70 to 80,000, maybe even upwards of $90,000. So option one is just to pay for it directly and, and, and get it over with. Option two, or I would say option, the real option one, so this would be the, uh, recommendation, would actually be to, um, transfer down a truck from, uh, the electric department, so 2015, one ton, already stocked, ready to go. It's a dump, and, um, uh, it's relatively low miles. Um, I think it's something that would last several, you know, many, many years for the Parks Department. Uh, and then it is on the electric department rotation, and then the, have the electric department purchase a new one. So, um, you know, sell the vehicle from Parks Cemetery's fund, or to the Cemeteries Fund, pay for the used vehicle from Electric, and then have Electric buy the new one. Um, the electric department's vehicle is probably, you know, three years out or so on its rotation, but, um, would need to be rotated out anyway, so it's getting close to that, that mark. So, um, that would be the, uh, I guess, the preference or the recommendation for city council to approve of that. So, um, in which case, Kevin, I believe we would need a, whichever option, we would need a, uh, budget adjustment of some sort to account for that, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those items that during budget season, we didn't anticipate a new cemetery.
Yeah. Um, it will be inconvenient for, you know, it could be up to a year before we get a vehicle. Uh, but it could be inconvenient for the Parks Department for now to toggle back and forth and, and, uh, you know, borrow vehicles from other departments to.
How tough is it to get a new one right away anyway?
To get a new.
A year?
Yeah, see, it's kind of tough to get a new one anyway, so we're going to be in a bind either way.
We're in a bind either way, yeah. So, um, just, you know, from the financial perspective, um, we believe the best option is to go with the pass down of the electric vehicle and purchase from the, uh, Electric Development Fund of the, of a new vehicle for a replacement.
So what do you need from us tonight?
Tonight, um, I would say we need a motion for, um, I guess if we're replacing it, we can put it on order and then put it in, if we get an approval from council, we can get it on order and then make the appropriation adjustment at the next quarterly budget adjustment.
If we're not going to get it for a year, will we, when will that money actually be dispersed? Will that be after budget for next year then?
Well, we, we, if you order it before the end of this year, we certainly could encumber the money.
Yeah, you, you got to, you have to have it appropriated and encumbered to people.
And the encumbrance would carry over to next year, whenever it comes in. We've done that with police cars, for example, that didn't come in. Or, and for the rec case, we did that with, uh, golf carts too, because it took a lot for them.
So you're looking for a motion to accept the recommendation?
Correct.
I will gladly make that motion. I'll second. The, the 2015, is that ready? Because the way it sounded, the, the park, the cemetery one was a snow pusher as well?
It was.
Is the 2015 also ready for that, or is that going to require some work to get that outfitted for us?
I believe it is, I believe all of our trucks are.
I think that one has a package.
Okay.
If not, we've got conditions to deal with, so.
Okay. What, what condition was the O one in? I mean, obviously, it had a fire, so it's not the best condition, but what I'm trying to prevent is the worst-looking truck in the Napoleon's fleet being part of our cemetery, so people come from out of town and we're giving somebody their last day, and we have a less-than-stellar vehicle being on site for that process.
Well, it's twenty-one years old, so it doesn't show signs of wear.
Right.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a rust bucket.
Okay. Okay.
But it was, it was due to be replaced.
Sure. Okay.
And the electric one is in, it's very clean.
It better be, it's fourteen years older than that one.
It's very clean. I mean, it's, you wouldn't think it's seven years old, even. It's very, they keep up, you know, they keep them very clean.
Any other questions or comments? Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Tucker Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right. Go around the table and start with Kevin today.
The only thing that I have is, if anyone is interested, I have paper copies of the audit that was approved by the state. I have paper copies, like, I kept one, I gave one to the mayor, I gave one to the city manager that we keep, and I have two additional copies if anyone wants to borrow. You're more than welcome to check it out and return it. If you have trouble sleeping at night, it will do wonders for you.
All right.
But it is certainly available for anyone to review.
Thank you.
So, just ask for it, and you shall have it. That's all I have.
All right. I'm going to jump to Rox's table. Joel?
All right. Our new human resources director is here, Brittany Roof. Brittany's from, from Hills, from Florida. The state of Florida.
All right.
Moved here with her husband, lives with her family in the Guasian area. And came here, took the position, and been one week. Been great, been good.
Welcome.
So, I would, just wanted to request that she come with us to the executive session that's listed on here, too.
Did you want to say anything to us or about yourself? You don't have to, just
I'm an open book. If we have any questions, I'd be more than happy to share.
All right, great. Welcome. All right.
So, that's one thing, committees, we have electric committee next week. We also have, there is an item that I'll talk to the chair about for water and sewer and refuse and recycling and litter committee, so it has to do with refuse, recycling, and litter. And don't have anything for municipal properties at this time, so unless there's anything else that comes up, just let me know. Can always get it on the agenda.
Is this where we start talking about the deer? You said we were going to talk about that at the end, or is that at the end?
This, this part right here. The peak alerts for electric. We may have a five CP alert on Wednesday, but we've really been light on the alerts. We were pretty heavy early on, they've been lighter. Having a five CP, probably, that's capacity. It's probably not going to be enough to dispatch the generators, the generators, so probably won't have them go on, but
Hey, Dan Barrett, don't jinx us, man.
I know. Well, if you do, that's okay. Hopefully, it's good weather, though. We do need a little rain. And then the last thing I wanted to say was, Mike and Ron and Mrs. Ron. And thanks for coming out. It's always good to hear from people and have people show up and express concerns and do, and do research and know, and know the business that you guys are talking about and letting us know what you, what you live and what your concerns are, so we can appropriately address them. Have gotten a lot of calls, complaints, and things, but it's always nice to see people here and express their concerns, so thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Dr. Dave?
Nothing for me.
Ken?
I took a drive around town Sunday. Probably the cleanest I have ever seen a town look. I think everybody mowed yard, didn't see any lawn grass anywhere. Looked nice.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right.
I'll let Kevin Schultes know you approve of his work.
Dan?
Again, I just would follow up on what Joel just said about the deer issue is definitely a problem. I mean, another area that's a little heavy is over my direction at County Road P in Jan's, up to the school's wooded area behind the baseball field. So, yeah, it's very evident. I nearly picked off a baby the other day, so. One of those spotted ones was sitting right in the road. But, yeah, that's an issue, but I have nothing else.
Mr. Mayor?
It's the hundredth anniversary of Napoleon Golf Course, so there's a lot of work that goes on there, day in and day out. Tony and his crew do a great job. Some of us played it at night, some of us played it during the day. I haven't played on it a long time, but all I hear is, every time I talk to people, it's always a compliment about how good the course is, so. Thanks, Tony, to you and all your people for all they do out there on a day-in-and-day-out basis, we appreciate it. Got a complaint letter from a citizen about, they had an inordinate amount of firework residue from the July Fourth City, our fireworks display. And I think the wind was blowing different that night than normal. I almost think it does. So, it was a lot more than usual. I'll talk to you offline about it, Tony, to make sure, so. We take care of that resident. Obviously, we're not providing good quality service to them, that's something we always take good, try to take, you know, a lot of pride in, so. Same kind of issue, but a little different with the sewer rebuild that had been out there on bales, so. And the quality of grass seed that got put in afterwards, put that in quotes, quality, so. Those are two things that I have, thank you very much, Council President.
The only thing I have is, Chad will put you on the spot, but it's all good stuff. Can you kind of tell us about the projects that are starting this week?
Yes, the contractor's supposed to be moving in sometime this week to start the path project on Jan's that's going to run down Jan's to River Park and then along Riverview Avenue. City utility crews started work today out by the parking lot, actually, working on relocating some holes, removing a water service we weren't aware existed, but names reported that they would be moving in this week. The word we got from Kirk and Paving this morning was that in the next day or two, they'll start milling on Glenwood and West Portland and Wood Lawn. They're looking at possibly holding off milling independents for now. They could be laying asphalt in and around the northwest side of the city as soon as Thursday. So, putting that much asphalt down will take a few days, but we could see part of that getting black Thursday.
All right. Thank you for the update. Ross?
I was glad that we were able to recognize the Aquatics Center personnel tonight. My daughter was at the pool that day and saw that event. It was a traumatic experience, so it's cool to be able to recognize those folks out there for their work on a daily basis. I would like to see the deer issue sent to committee. I don't know where we want that to end up, but I would like that to be appointed, if at all possible. Lastly, we've definitely increased our social media presence as a city. I think that's been intentional from the IT Committee and a few others, so just want to say thank you for the focus there. I think that's a great way to kind of spread what's going on in partnership with Brian and Northwest Signal, you know, it's just another avenue, so, thanks for that. That's all I have.
All right. Save the best for last, your Molly?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing, all right. I guess for the, for the deer, we can kind of talk through either safety committee, obviously, it sounds like a safety issue, or it could be municipal property to me. I don't know which one makes more sense.
Yeah, I'd suggest the municipal property is just because of the land use piece of it.
Right. Yeah. We can put it there.
It, I mean, you could argue both points, it could be safety and human resources, too, so I just
You good with that? That's your, okay. All right, we'll sign it to that.
Okay, is that, do you want that on for the next week, for next week's committee meetings?
Will we have enough information by then, or did you want to do a little bit of research and come back to us on it?
If we want to do something this year, probably going to want to have it next week. I think we've got enough information now, unless, unless Billy can tell me otherwise. Okay.
Okay. All right. Did you get that, Rox? You?
And if we need to talk about it and go back and get more information, we can always do that, too, so.
At least get the ball rolling?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Item M, executive session. We have personnel and collective bargaining. We have a motion to go into executive session for both of those items, please.
So moved.
Second?
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Tucker Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. I do want to start off in the executive session, just with the elected officials first, and then we'll call the others.
We unmuted, Joel?
No, I closed it out, and there's nobody else on.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to come out of the executive session for personnel and collective bargaining.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Tucker Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. No action taken there. And item N, approved payments of bills, in the absence of any objections or corrections, payment bills shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. We have a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Second.
Sure.
Rox, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Tucker Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. We are adjourned.